Good evening. I am Cory Cantrell, a member of the League of Women Voters here in Sioux City. I will be serving as a moderator for this evening's City Council of Sioux City Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose membership is open to citizens over the age of 16 in each area. We do not endorse candidates or political parties. We do however work to educate ourselves and the public on issues affecting our citizens and government. That is why we are committed to hosting candidate forums like this one. Please visit the League of Women Voters of Sioux City Facebook page to learn more about our varied programs. Our co-host for tonight's candidate forum is Sulan Go. Sulan Growth Organization was formed in 2002 to encourage young professionals to become active members of the Sulan community. They encourage progressive and innovative ideas and bring together voices from all generations to create a positive impact on the future of the Sulan community. Their goal is to attract and retain young professionals in the area who are providing insight on what Sulan has to offer and how they can get involved in shaping its future. Tonight we will be assisted by the Sioux City's Mayor Youth Commission. The Mayor's Youth Commission represents Sioux City's public and private high schools. The members' students are committed to community service. The League of Women Voters of Sioux City is proud to continue our work with the Mayor's Youth Commission and to involve them in this and our other forums and events. We would also like to thank Rachel Lundgren and Mary Koster of Sulan Cares and the members of that organization and the other adult volunteers for their mentorship of the members of the Mayor's Youth Commission. We would like to thank the mayor and the city support staff, especially City Clerk Lisa McGardle and Deputy City Clerk Heidi Ferentz for their assistance in making the excellent arrangements for tonight's forum, and particularly the city A/B team led by Danny Bach for recording this event to show on Sparklight and the YouTube Sioux City channel. It will also be on the League of Women Voters Sioux City Facebook page. The Facebook page will be monitored for any questions coming in for the candidates. The Mayor's Youth Commission members who are volunteering tonight are Maria McGallit and Ian Wilke. Wilke, let's give them a hand. And serving as our panelists are Bernie Scalero for the League of Women Voters, Nick Dranth of Sulan Go, and Woody Gottberg, president of the Sioux City Press Club and the news director for KSCJ. On behalf of the citizens of Sioux City, I want to thank our candidates for their willingness to run for public office. The mayor and one city council member will be elected on Tuesday, November 7th. Bob Scott is the sole candidate on the ballot for mayor, so we will not be asking him questions tonight. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our two candidates in alphabetical order. Tom Murphy and Julie Schwaner. Schaner, I don't get it right. I apologize. Schaner. We will start posing questions to the candidates relative to their qualifications for the position and allow you two minutes to respond for our opening. And then the panelists will pose their question. Each panelist will pose a question to be answered by both candidates. And we'll alternate who gets to start first. The candidates will have 60 seconds to respond. And our Mayor Youth Commission timers will hold up signs to tell you when 30 seconds is passed and then when the timer's expired, you're going to show them those so that they can see what they're looking for. There you go. Between 7:30, 7:45, we will take a short break just to collect questions from the audience. We are encouraged to write your questions on the cards provided or submit them on our Facebook page. And then when we reconvene, I will pose as many of those questions as I can to our two candidates. At the conclusion of the audience questions, each candidate will be allowed 60 seconds for a closing statement. I would like to remind the audience, the candidates, and the panelists that we have any opportunity to model respect for ourselves and others and listening skills tonight, please turn off your cell phones, be courteous, and attentive. Okay, so for our introduction, would you please state your qualifications for serving on the Sioux City Council of Sioux City? And what is your motivation for running for office? And we'll start with you, Mr. Murphy.
My qualifications are, I worked for the city for 32 years. I worked for the Sioux City Assessors Office for nine. Went over and went to work for building inspections. Started out as a residential building inspector, passed all my certifications, passed my commercial certifications, now I became the chief and building inspector for the last six or seven years of my career there. I've done all the big projects in Sioux City. Seaboard Triumph, Warrior, Fleet Farm, all the apartment complexes, Hard Rock. I've done my vast construction experience throughout the years. I was a bricklayer for a long time before I did that. And the common knowledge of all the taxes and the zoning and everything from the work at the Assessors Office, that's why I feel I'm very qualified for this position.
Thank you. And Ms. Schaner?
There we go. Okay. I have four years of experience on city council thus far. Prior to city council, I was a small business owner that basically started a business from scratch on historic Fourth Street. I was successful in that. I took a business that was, had a revenue of about $240,000 per year and built it into a business that produced $1.3 million per year. I was considered an anchor. My business was on historic fourth in that. We led the charge to encourage other businesses and small business owners to come downtown. I joined the downtown partners as a stakeholder to again encourage smaller businesses to come downtown. Prior to that, I have 12 years' experience in the banking industry, six years' experience in the credit reporting industry. Prior to that, I've had a varied career from cutting meat when I was a young married farm wife, her partners in Tyson Foods, to getting into the white collar jobs with the banking. So I think I'm pretty varied. I pretty much understand the workforce and what people are up against. And my husband's a harper, so I understand where very deeply embedded in agricultural industry in this area as well. I'd like to continue my service to Sioux City if you'll allow.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our panelists for their questions. We'll start with Ms. Galero, and you will direct your question first to Ms. Schaner, and then we'll switch off.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My first question is kind of too bold. It is a kind of a general question for the public's understanding. If you could just explain what you feel the role is of the city council, and then more specifically, if elected, what your priorities would be?
Okay. The role of the city council is policies approval. We have staff that does most of the due diligence. They dive deep into projects and decode into things that are behind scenes, contracts and things. Those things are brought to us for review. And our role is policy and decision-making at that level. And that's not to say that we don't dive much deeper in, which I find myself doing a lot. I like to be involved in decision-making. I like to be available to staff if they have any questions. I love diving deep into ideas, how we can improve the city. And that's probably the second part of the question is, I'd like to continue doing that, coming up with new ways, innovative ways, ways that we haven't tried in the past to make our city better.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, same question.
I think the role of city council is to promote economic growth, keep jobs here, make sure the public safety, and start developing some programs to get the infrastructure, water mains, water sewer lines, and stuff like that updated. I'd also like to see some of the city services updated some. People be more personable and more approachable. I had a very good reputation of doing that all along, and I will do that if I become a member of the council. I will be approachable all the time to try to answer as many questions as I can in thoughtful manner and help anybody I can so that they can make Sioux City a better and safer place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Dranth, would you like to direct your first question to Mr. Murphy, please?
Dranth, what do you feel is the biggest issue that is fixing Sioux City right now? And how do you plan on addressing that issue?
One of the biggest issues in Sioux City right now is the sewage treatment plant. We need to get that squared away and figure out with the businesses what we're going to do and what we can do in the future. We need to, I understand that there's a need for the sewage treatment plant, but we have to get some committees together and work with all the interacres, all the, and have meetings with the actual people that are the highest users and the DNR and the actual building permits and the plant so we can get this squared away and get this matter taken care of. It'll be the biggest, highest money in the month that's ever been done in Sioux City, and that's where I feel my construction experience will really come into play with this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Schaner, would you direct that?
Yes. I agree with Tom. The wastewater treatment plant is of the utmost importance. We hear statements a lot that we're spending half a billion, we're spending $700 million, and those statements are taken out of context. We have got to rebuild our wastewater treatment plant. We had a choice to rebuild a brand new one, or rebuild the one we have, or to build a new one. And to be fiscally responsible, we chose to build a new one at the site that it's at now, at a total cost of $470 million if we were to complete Phase 3. We are committed to the feeding, fixing, up to Phase 2, which is a total rebuild for its act. And Phase 2 will also increase our capacity slightly, which the DNR is requiring. We have a lawsuit pending against us for past performance. We've not faced that yet. We have a committee formed. We have people from the public. We have representatives from our sister cities. We have representatives from the industry, six of them on that as well. We had our first informal meeting a week ago Thursday. Did that say time is up?
Sorry. And Mr. Gottberg, would you like to direct your first question?
I'll stay on that topic. A few years ago, a prominent businessman told me, change orders, that's how you really make your money on these big projects. So with the magnitude of what the wastewater treatment plant is going to cost, I know we have a citizens committee, is that going to be enough as far as monitoring the additional costs which will come, whether it's change orders or inflation? So knowing what we're supposedly spending, it'll probably end up being more, how are we going to monitor that and keep it on budget as best we can? How can we do that to keep the cost overruns from happening?
We have hired one of the top 10 engineering firms in the country to manage that for us. There have been so many statements made in the past that we never got it right. Different times when the plant has been first built and updated in the 1990s, then again in 2007, wrong materials were used, too cheap a materials were used, you know, solution for a complaint filed. We decided if we're going to do this, we are not going to be the generation that says they did it wrong, they never got it right. This is our opportunity to right it. And so our engineering firm will also oversee any false actions that might be taking place or overbridges and things like that.
Mr. Murphy?
I think before any work starts on this new sewage treatment plant down there, we're going to have to meet with the highest users down there and figure out what their needs are and their future needs are. And they possibly have, there's been rumors that they're going to build their own sewage treatment plants. If they build their own sewage treatment plants down there, all the wastewater that will come into the plant now, we can have a new plant, but we will not receive the revenue to pay for the new plant. If we don't get the revenue for the new plant, then taxes will go up and the rates and everything, our sewer rates will also go up. We have to make sure that we get started right on this, get with the other people, and make sure that the sewer amounts that they're going to send to us, they don't build their own plants so we can keep this up. I've looked into this a whole bunch. The old sewage plant is kind of old, and we need to do a lot of baby money and stuff. And the engineering firm, the consultants and stuff, have to meet with the other people so that we know the amounts that are going to go through there, and it'll last to future for future expansion.
Okay. Do I give a minute to you?
I thought you went first.
Oh, wow. Do we need a rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay, how about 30-second rebutts?
Okay.
Okay, 30-second rebutts.
The plant was built in 1960. It was upgraded with an expansion in the 70s. In 2013, other expansions were made. We have met with the industry leaders. Yes, they have talked about an option of building their own plant named Seaboard Triumph Foods. We have development agreements with all of the major industry users that tell us, we tell them, this is your limit. This is what we expect to get from you. What has happened is their productivity has increased, and it's blown way over them when using our plant, when we can't handle that load. It's going to take them five years to build another plant. If they want to build their own, it has to come in.
I can say your 30 seconds is up. Mr. Murphy, I'm going to give you 30 seconds too since we gave Ms. Schaner 30 seconds.
I'm very different from the bigger plants and stuff. They have not been contacted by the council and stuff, and they have not, you know, professionally been advanced until they know that that's been going on. We need to get to the bottom of this. It's going to be the biggest project that's ever been in Sioux City, and we need to get this right so we can do it once and be done with it.
Okay, thank you. Let's look back to Ms. Galero. You're going to address your first question to Mr. Murphy.
The budget is always a concern. If necessary, where would you cut the city budget? And what would you consider off limits to budget cuts? If you could explain that answer.
Off limits is public safety, fire, and police. We need that to make our city safe so that we can raise our families. Budget cuts are very, very hard at this day and age because we need so much infrastructure and stuff. I don't see in the future where we can have severe budget cuts. We need to make sure we take care of the first things first, make public safety, and then we can work on federal grants and stuff like that to try to get the inner structure and streets and stuff like that fixed. And once we get that going and everything, you know, we should be able to keep an even budget, but with times are and the way expenses are and everything, I can't see any severe budget cuts in the near future.
Okay, Ms. Schaner?
I agree with public safety. I think we need to continue to fully fund anyone who provides first response. I voted in the past for four police officers last year's budget goes around. Takes a long time to hire one, so rather than spread it out, we vote for four. I kind of left the charge on that. Same thing for fire and safety equipment. Lighting downtown was another safety issue. I think we've done a good job in the last few years building up our amenities to make our city popular, that employers would look to us to have their employees work here and live here. I think we're looking at getting back to the basics this upcoming budget season and sticking to kind of the very goal. So I'm not sure it will necessarily cut budget, but I think it will hold it.
All right.
Can I agree level, please?
30 seconds.
Okay. The way we can get the budget more balanced and everything is we can promote more industry and industrial so that we can get the tax base up, and that will help residential property taxes, and it'll also help the city budget and bring more jobs to the city.
Would you like a 30-second rebuttal?
Yes, I would. And that is exactly the path that we're taking, is we're creating more industry. But we can't create any industry that requires wastewater because our plant is running at 100% capacity. So we've got to get that under control. We've got to start work. The design work takes a year to 18 months. So we can talk to the industry leaders around the town while the design is in process. Nothing has been set in stone.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dranth, would you direct your question to Ms. Schaner?
I was kind of in that same vein. So what, how do you plan on encouraging investment and promoting further to get on the growth in Sioux City?
Well, we are doing a good job. We've got it started again with amenities. When I ran last time, I did a lot of Googling why other cities have grown, and you know, Sioux City kind of has this little shadowy moor course that we don't grow. And so much of it said things like amenities. It said that Omaha hired an advertising firm to do research for them. Why aren't this certain demographic leaving 25 and get fortified? And it said they want paths, they want trails, they want amenities, they want blockways, they want the river to develop. And I can't agree more with what we've done. We've embraced travel sports with our expo center. So I think we have those things set into place, and we do have people looking at us right now. And of course, I can't say what they are, but we do, we do. Sioux City is on the verge of being better.
Mr. Murphy?
We have a great industrial site down there by Seaboard Triumph. There's a lot of nice ground down there that's nice and flat. We have Interstate 49 connects to Interstate 90 and 80. We have railroad spurs down there, and we can promote some of the better high-paying mechanical type jobs. And let's say we could get a window farm type job, you know, factory down there instead of using the wastewater. You know, you get the offices, and you get the white collar, and you get the blue collar. Once you get that kind of established, that lifts the property taxes once again. And then after you get that going, maybe we could get a developer to come in here to build some housing. And we need housing, that's affordable housing, kind of like the tracks that are along the highway up in Sioux Falls. That's one thing that, another thing that we need to do to get Sioux City growing.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Gottberg, would you direct your question to Mr. Murphy?
Sure. New topic. Every morning when I'm listening to my police radio, there's anywhere from three to 10 calls that officers are dispatched on from homeless people from business entrances, apartment buildings, the library. You can pick your place. And this happens on a daily basis. With winter coming soon, one, I don't know if we have enough current space at our shoulder for what's been apparently a growing population. What can the city do or what should be the city's involvement in helping to deal with finding a place for homeless people in Sioux City? Because every day, police are having to deal with them, and it's a daily occurrence.
I have a son-in-law that I've been talking to about this deal that he has programs. He works, is based out of Lincoln, Nebraska. And he told me that there's a whole bunch of government programs and stuff that can get it going. And once, if I get it on the council, I'll get him to come in, try to set up some committees and everything, and see exactly where the federal money is. And maybe we could convert some other older buildings into some type, even, even look at container type housing. It's been all over the nation where people have done the container type housing, just to get them in and off the streets. And you know, instead of being a problem and, you know, and panhandling and doing everything else that's not safe up there by the Hard Rock, somebody's going to end up getting run over and killed. And that's one of the things that I've been checking into. But you know, that is a very tough subject to handle.
Ms. Schaner?
I agree. It is a really difficult situation. It's stigmatized by citizens oftentimes that comments, statements that we hear are, these people don't want help, or they can't need help. And they do want help. They just aren't able to figure it out. I worked with our Neighborhood Services Department this past year. They have moved their offices from this building down to Street 8 on Nebraska Street to be more readily available for anyone homeless or anyone experiencing difficulty with their housing. They have integrated into their program intake services. So when they come in, they give them an evaluation so we better know where we can help them. If they need help with disimpal housing, or perhaps they ran out of money and don't have enough money for their down payment for their apartment, we offer those services. We offer transportation services, relocation services. We refer to the Gaskell Mission to Hope Street. Hope Street is a very successful program, and I would like to see the city get involved in that.
Thank you. And Ms. Galero, we're back to you.
The inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee has been established to increase equity, diversity, and inclusion in city government and the community. As a council member, how would you support or be involved in this committee?
Well, presently, I am supportive of our inclusive net committee. I never counted my first serving on it at this time, so I'm not on their board. But I'm involved with festivals, with planning for things that are inclusive, different activities. I support our agent who works for us, our inclusive agent, Sem Har. And I think we can grow it from where we're at now. I would love to see her department expand over the next couple of years, or perhaps she get a halftime person to come in and help with getting the message out. She works with our sister cities. She's gone to private industry here. I know she went out to Seaboard, or to CF Industries in Hope when they had a problem. So I definitely support it. I think we're doing a great job, and I think we do too.
And Mr. Murphy?
Seminar and I worked together quite a bit on the people that would come to Sioux City and open up businesses and stuff. And there was always a problem with the language barrier, and then she would come in and she would take care of that for us. And at that particular time, I would organize everybody else so we could get all the inspectors there at one time so that if they had questions to ask, we could get it taken care of. And we did quite a few businesses, and with her help and everything, it really worked well. And I agree, if she could get more help, you could, you know, could get more and more businesses started here. Because those people just want to start a business up and work hard also.
Okay. Ms. Dranth?
We've often heard that Sioux City's a blue-collar city. And we see a lot of art growth in these blue-collar areas. How do you see Sioux City developing over the next five, 10, 15 years as continuing on that same track as developing a blue-collar industries in town, or diversifying to trying to attract more white-collar industries as well?
That's yours, Ms. Murphy.
I don't know if we'll ever become a white-collar community again. We've always been a blue-collar community, starting out in the back of noses in the 40s and stuff. But what I would like to see is if we could get those bigger companies to come. For example, Seaboard Triumph, where you can get 1,000, 1,500 jobs from the blue collar, but you also have 300 office jobs that are the white collar, so that we have a mix. If we can get a mix like that and get the companies in here, and then maybe we can expand. It's very difficult where we live with the other cities, you know, getting tax benefits and stuff like that. South Dakota has no personal income tax. So that's where we have, you know, the hard thing. I mean, what we need to do is show them that we can just have huge, beautiful lots down there by the airport, where we can attract their business and get it built up. And then maybe we could go 60/40, you know, on a deal like that, blue collar and 40% white collar. And then they can work.
Ms. Schaner?
I agree. We embrace our agriculture, and we embrace what industry comes along with it. And if we can get larger industries, Tom's correct, with larger industry comes the white collar jobs that you gave, I mean, work in, and things like that. Support businesses that come in, they want to be by and near the businesses that they support. If we would have a huge industry, but with it, we have to consider daycare, where we're going to land these businesses. And I think the business park that we're building, we acquired several large properties to continue growing that business park down south. And we're ready. We are, we're ready for a big industry to come.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gottberg?
One of the most misunderstood city issues that was fought on Facebook for the last month of summer, where are the explorers going? So five years, 10 years, 12 years? How long should the lease be this go around? It's always been 10 years. There's been a pitch to have it only be five years. It might be 12 years. If as many fans as argued on Facebook came to the ballpark, we have sellouts of every home event. What should it be for the X's? Obviously, a lot of people don't want to lose them.
Right, absolutely. And the city doesn't want to lose them either. I would support a tenure contract again, absolutely. I was the council member who went down a rabbit hole and reminded folks that looking at a new contract is normal. We did have some, I'm not going to say arguments, but some communication with our owner last year. There was some dispute over who should be taking care of the seats based on their contract. The city did end up... The city did end up getting them, repairing, or replacing them all because you couldn't repair them anymore. And, but at that time, their owner stated to us, I'm gonna take these Xs and I'm gonna leave your city, not your back. So their ten-year contract is coming up, so we have to take a look. We have to have a backup plan and see if there are others interested. Did we want to get rid of the Xs? Absolutely not. They're doing great, they've had great season. We just want to see them continue to build in those stands and perhaps have more community involvement, a little more outreach, get folks to get theirselves in the seats. I'd love to see them get a ticket to every kid in school in Sioux City and have a parent come with them and chaperone and give them a taste of what that feels like.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
The Explorers Ballpark has a huge place in my heart. My daughter's saying, take me out to the ballgame the night it opened. And I think the Explorers should stay here, absolutely, ten-year contract is fine. But I think the stadium ought to be utilized more. I think a lot more high school games should be there. Bring in out-of-town teams, you know, have more Little League-type camps down there. It's a beautiful ballpark and we need to utilize that part as much as we can. I mean, they could have, you know, Dakota Valley come down there and have tournaments and stuff down there and then have the concessions. A lot of times, it just sits there. And I realize that the Xs, you know, use it for practice and everything else, but I think we can work out a schedule and make that ballpark a lot more usable.
Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna do one more round of questions and then turn to the audience for theirs. So Ms. Galera, would you ask your final question?
Okay. Don't ever eat your... I guess my question then is, what do you think the city's legislative priorities should be in the next Iowa legislative session? And do you have thoughts on how to strengthen the city's voice in Des Moines?
Mr. Murphy?
Not being from on the council and everything, you know, and the legislative end of it, I'm not too familiar with it. But I think we could get a representative that's down there to sell our city. And to sell our city, I mean by, you know, trying to get the businesses and stuff to come here and make sure that if there's anything available federally, that we're aligned for it.
And Ms. Shager?
We're a member of the League of Cities, so we have them championing for Sioux City and cities of our size in Des Moines. Our Chamber of Commerce, city leaders have all been there. We all, they get a chance to state their case, what we'd like to see them fighting for us. We did have a recent reduction in our Iowa income tax, which was nice. I just attended the tri-state governor's conference and they still like to lower it even a little bit more. Our governor says she's gonna copy what South Dakota governor's doing. Okay, as long as we can do it and, and get some tax relief to our residents, I can, I can agree with that.
Okay. And Ms. Shager?
So as a member of Sioux City growth organization, a big part of our mission is attracting and retaining young professionals. And one of my questions earlier was, was directed to grow economically of the city. But how do you intend as far as policies or otherwise, to attract and retain specifically young professionals?
Uh, yes. Young professionals are looking for not necessarily the giant cities. They're looking for quality of life, they're looking for work-life balance. And finding employers and working with them, coming out of our universities and our colleges here, placing them in, I just lost my word. I'm sorry. Work and, and school type jobs. Trying to keep them here and showing them what a great community we have. We, again, keeping them in their internships, that's what I was looking for, and giving them a taste of what Sioux City's like. But once again, it wraps around to those amenities. What do I do here? I mean, I think we're rediscovering the museum, the arts center, the riverfront, the sports complexes. There's just so much to do and they are looking for those amenities, they truly are.
Mr. Murphy?
I think the secret to keeping our young children here is trying to get the businesses to recruit them and, and find out that the kids have a basic quality of life here in the Midwest and their upbringing and everything, they're good quality kids, and that they will be successful. I know we're not gonna keep everybody here and the young professionals and everything. I just, the other day, attended a bill that home builders put on. And I was shocked at how the young kids and stuff are taking to that kind of stuff in the city. And maybe they could do a fair on the professional end of it, like they did for the trains, and get those kids interested. And then people can actually, the businesses, show them what they got to offer and to keep them to stay here.
All right. Mr. Gutford, final question.
All right. I'll make this another police radio-related call. Another call unfortunately I hear a lot of is next to mobile ambulance. And a lot of it has to do with mental health calls, suicide-related calls. But we don't seem to have enough ambulances to respond at times. And certainly if there's a fire, sometimes we have at least three rigs at, at that with a couple of firefighters per engine or truck, depending on the nature of it. So to kind of simplify it, do we have enough firefighters? Do we have enough ambulances? I think fire trucks and engines is playing a role by the amount of fires we have. But do we need more ambulances in town? I don't, I don't know how aware of you are as far as the, the big increase in medical runs that have been happening every day. But, but some days, there's more medical calls than we seem to be able to keep up with.
Mr. Murphy?
Sometimes I think the medical calls and stuff like that come with the age of the community. And the best thing that ever happened was putting the ambulances in the firehouse for faster response. And I think in high area calls throughout the city, there's some firehouses that have twice as many calls as the other. And that's where you get the next backup ambulance that will come from another station if there's a major car accident or something like that. I don't know whether or not it would be feasible to add a whole bunch more ambulances. I know one thing for sure, when they have a call, two rigs come. And most of the firemen are paramedics. So, you know, on the basic stuff, they can kind of handle it, but on the major stuff, the transport to the hospital and everything, that's where the ambulance comes into play.
Ms. Shager?
We took over the ambulance services for Sioux City in 2017. And that was all new to the city. It was privately run before. They went out of business, so we took it over again and embraced it. It's staffed with really great experts, but recently, as recent as 2021, we added four van-style ambulances that are a little more maneuverable through traffic and through smaller places. Instead of the big rigs, we just approved, replacing four of our units with four full-size ambulances coming up this next year. So I think we have enough equipment, but the increased calls, and sometimes the calls are for truancy almost, that they're, you know, passed out and things like that. Those things have increased, yes. But yeah, I think we have enough equipment and just possibly staffing. You know, we can be a little bit low on staffing at times, but I do believe that they're doing a good job at what they're doing now.
All right. Thank you. This will, that will conclude our panelist portion of the forum. And I would like to ask the audience to join me in thanking our panelists for their participation. Let's say a five-minute break at this point because the weather outlook is not looking real great. So if you have questions, please get them written on the cards and one of the legal women voters who go or near commission members will collect it for you. And we'll start back in about five minutes. Thank you. Yeah. And thank you very much for coming.
I was supposed to be there, but I didn't.
Yep, yep, yep.
How's that?
And if people want to get back to your seats, we would like to get started in about one minute, so if you would welcome to return if you'd like. And if everyone is ready, you can get started. Got the cattle? I could. I would prefer not to. I would prefer it if people just sat down so we could start. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our break time is over. We would like to go to the audience questions. And I will try to get through as many of them as I can in the time we have left. But we do want to get out of here fairly early tonight because we are supposed to be getting weather in. So we're going to go back to our questions. And I'm going to address this one to Ms. Shager. What would be your plans to improve the infrastructure, particularly focusing on the city's streets?
Well, I'd already addressed that. We'll be in our CIP this year, coming up this winter. Well, certainly not this winter. I promised when I took this job, I was asked, do you believe in term limits? And I said I did, but at the state and federal level. I think our community's small enough, smart enough to vote who they think is doing the job. But I did say I would self-assess myself in the summer before this time of running again. So I did do that. And I've been on the Public Works team for just two of my four years. And I didn't give myself a very good score for Public Works because I couldn't find money to do these twelve million dollar streets. Every block is twelve million dollars to tear it up and replace everything. So I put together the streets and the engineering team and came up with, we were going to see if we can get a group to do a overlay that is going to last around twelve years. We'll do mill and overlay on the worst of the worst streets. We will look for hot spots before we do it. So if there's any infrastructure that's obvious, we'll definitely go around those, but we'll do a forty-foot continuous mill and overlay because we're never going to have the billions of dollars that it takes to replace the infrastructure as quickly as we can. So John and Susan Smith, who were forty, sixty, eighty hours a week, should get to drive home on a Sioux street.
Thank you. And I think you took ninety seconds on that one, so if Mr. Murphy, well, it was a detailed answer. So Mr. Murphy will give you ninety seconds too.
Okay. Personal friend of mine was the old city engineer. Back when I was a kid, they did overlays on all the city's streets. It was an asphalt overlay for Sioux Falls granite chips. And they went in and they coated the streets and everything, and they lasted for a really long time. And the secret to it was, was when they put the chips down into the hot asphalt, they rolled them in instead of some of the way the Nebraska people and South Dakota people do, they broadcast them through hot tar. And he said the same thing, it's too expensive. And he said the same thing. It's too expensive to go in and tear up their street in Sioux City. And if we can get this program initiated and get it going. But the problem with it is, is we gotta make sure that if we have problem waterways and we can work with the structures underneath there, try to get the really bad ones fixed and make sure they're located so we don't tear up a brand-new bad street.
Thank you.
No.
We'll see you on the CIP. We're gonna go to another question because I have quite a few to answer. So Mr. Murphy, food insecurity is a major issue in Sioux City as one in ten individuals and one in five children are hungry. How can we solve the problem of food deserts like downtown where easy access is impossible?
When I was back doing inspections there, they worked with them when they remodeled all the food kitchen down there and stuff. And I think the downtown really needs some type of a grocery store. And that would help a lot. But we still need points where maybe we could even initiate some type of a pickup, a pickup point downtown out of a building like on a Saturday morning or something, and come and get it. That's a really hard question because, you know, it's dominant the old rules with Alpine down there where they have all the gibbings where people donate and stuff like that. It's hard for them to get it, you know, they take it on the soup kitchens and stuff like that. But, you know, that's basically for cooking. And then that is a very hard question, and that's gonna take a lot of work to get that done.
Ms. Shainer?
I understand food insecurity. I was a food insecure child at times. And I understand the feeling of it. It's not just a hungry tummy. It affects your mental awareness. It affects your ability to intermingle and spend time with friends and teachers, things like that. Sioux City has the Sioux Land Food Bank. It provides food to eighteen pantries around the city. We have grown the pantries from sixteen to eighteen now. More churches, more private businesses are getting involved. So we'll continue on that path. Just being readily available, sometimes it's a matter of showing them where to go. We've got the Gospel Mission. We've got the soup kitchen. There are snacks available at the Winding Shelter at all times. So we've got a really good start, but that all wraps around with our homeless population as well. So I think sometimes they go hand in hand.
Ms. Shainer, this one's for you. What is your view or belief about public debt? Is it a tool or a liability?
Public debt is a tool. The city keeps their debt down as low as possible. We never ride up the top of our public debt load. We kept it at around fifty percent. We could rise it up to as high as sixty-four percent. We don't. You know, very fiscally responsible when it comes to debt. And I think we plan on continuing on that path. Sometimes I wanna push it a little more because I'm kind of a spender to get things going in a fiscally responsible way, of course. But we have to get things done. We can't keep saying we can't do it and look what we have to do. We've been doing more than we ever thought we would.
Mr. Murphy?
I would like to see the public debt get down to as low as ten. And I think we could do that by trying to get more federal grants and more programs going that are government and state involved. But otherwise, you still have to spend money to maintain and do things to keep the city going.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy, this is a question that came in through Facebook. And I'm hoping you can explain it because I don't know exactly what they mean. It says, please ask you to explain TIF. So I don't know what they mean by TIF. Perhaps you could enlighten us?
It's temp district.
Okay.
And it's a tax increment financing. And there's different districts through the town where they... You have to qualify for it and stuff like that. And then there's... It's kind of a complicated deal that when you go to... The temp districts are a way that they have tax-based programs and stuff like that.
Okay, Ms. Shainer?
Yes, and what it does is it takes the... There's improvements made. It takes the tax dollars that would be realized for the improvement, and it goes into that section. So rather than it going to other places, we keep it in that designated area for growth.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Shainer, how involved are you with our multicultural community in America?
I'm involved. I just spent eight hours over at our West Southern Music Festival. And I had a great day. It was the first inaugural festival. And I thought, oh, I'm gonna go over there for a couple of hours. I couldn't tear myself away. We had music, speakers, dancers, great food. It was a wonderful event. It really was, and I enjoyed it thoroughly. I love going to as many of those events as I can. I can't wait to see what it looks like next year, and I love it.
Great. Mr. Murphy, how about you?
Next year, I'm gonna get involved with expanding down at the Riverfront. And I would like to help out more if I can. If a business comes to Sioux City and they want to get started, I can show them how to get started and even bring them down to the City Hall, how to book permits, how to talk, you know, to the right people, and zoning, and what they can do and what they cannot do.
All right. Economic development continues in Sioux City, but often the west side gets left out. What will be your plan to develop Cook Park? And I think this is a separate question. In future plans for our homeless population, unless that would be involved in Cook Park, I think it'd be a separate question. So you wanna focus on the west side and Cook Park, please?
Cook Park, they turned this home full on over there. And I don't know whether or not, you know, Girls' Inc. is over there. They built that building, too. I think that was a great asset to put over there. If they would get the Land Theater and they could convert that into some housing if they move back downtown into the building that they're trying to renovate now, that'd be another possibility. But actually, pretty nice flat lots over there, that might be a place that they could incorporate and put some low-income housing in.
Ms. Shainer?
Cook Park, I think, has been experiencing some difficulties with the... Those who are experiencing homelessness have been camping over there. We had some folks reach out to us recently to see what we could do to help. I think outreach is what's gonna help Cook Park itself, is to get people out, meet with them, sit down in their area, not expecting them to come all the way downtown. And the city just was approved for a grant that will give us salaries for two-hour weekends to go out and talk to people, ask them what they need, what do we do and what can we do to help you? And I think Cook Park will be a great place to start that outreach.
Okay, another question then. Should there be camera surveillance added in the downtown area? Ms. Shainer?
Yes, I think camera surveillance is awesome. I happen to know that due to the camera surveillance that we have that captures license plates, just nab a... Quite a financial ring that was getting people to bring money places. And we actually have an officer who is kind of setting up a camera program. And we're applying for some federal and state funds to help fund that. And it will eventually tie into a national camera where it will read what kind of a car, what color of a car, what the license plate was. So when there is chases going on, or there's someone who's wanted in other states, we'll be able to capture them, and other states will be able to capture them for us because we'll have those cameras to read. I would like to see a start with our downtown area. That would be great.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I think cameras would be essential to being in the downtown area and make it a lot safer place to be. People, it would run the people that are down here, that are not intended to do business down here, that are intended to do harm to other people. They're gonna look at that, say, hey, there's cameras down here. We're gonna vacate this area so that we're not on film. I mean, this day and age, for everything, there's a camera. Like you see in the bigger cities and everything, the first thing they do when there's a crime is they go and they go into the plates and they review the camera footage. And nine times out of ten, they're inevitable gonna get caught.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, we'll go to you for this one. How can Sioux City ensure that people with disabilities are getting matched with the ADA laws?
The ADA laws was a place in my heart. I'm the one that got all the bathrooms and stuff set up through the inspection services and stuff and make sure doorways and everything so that they can actually use the bathroom facilities and stuff like that. And then engineering got into it very... For the, you know, getting on and off the streets and everything with the tack pads, I call them, you know. ADA is a very critical thing. I mean, you need to get buildings accessible so people can get in. I mean, it's unfortunate they have to be in that position, and nobody wants to be in that position. And the more that we can do to make it safer for them to get in and out, parking lots, you know, parking lot handicapped spaces, make sure people aren't parking there and they get fined for doing it, the better off we'll be.
Ms. Shainer?
I have all of what Tom says. We also have our people rights that they can complain to if there's something going on. The city supports that. We actually pay salaries there through our budgets. We're fairly aware that we need to continue to add push buttons on doors. I think we've actually added a couple of those. Mr. Waters kind of tends to lean into that, and we can all understand why. We can see it from his perspective with his input, and I love that about him. He's not great bringing it up. You know, he says, I don't want to be that person that constantly brings it up, but he is the spokesperson for other people. And I appreciate that a lot. Anytime that we take out a street or a corner, we have to make sure that we put those little yellow... What do you call those bump?
I call them tack pads.
Yeah, we put the little bump pads back in, and we ensure that they're done right. So we'll continue on that fight for people with disabilities and continue getting access to whatever we can.
Thank you. Ms. Shainer, the League of Women Voters began a recycling program years ago with request dollars. What concerns do you have with our present services? And how can we increase recycling here in Sioux City?
We have increased recycling in Sioux City. We have just placed six large recycling containers downtown in Sioux City. So anyone who lives downtown or is driving downtown, or perhaps lives in an apartment building or doesn't have a recycling bin, they can use those. There's a sorting ability there. We put out literature that shows people, tells them how to do it, what to expect with recycling. Something else we did for recycling, from a Public Works standpoint, is we renegotiated contracts with our solid waste, our trash pickup. And it's kind of under trial and error right now. But you may request as many recycling bins as you would like, re-emptarge or picked up, re-emptarge. But we've reduced the number of trips they make to your house to include the trucks in the green. So if we can make fewer trips every other week, we're also taking stress off the streets, gas emissions, all of that. So that decision was made as one whole picture. And so I have had a couple of people leave me and say, my bin isn't enough. And I say, get another one or get two more if you need them.
Mr. Murphy?
I'm a big sportsman, so anybody that can recycle that takes the time to keep the stuff out of landfill and keep all the products out of our water system, take the time to recycle everything you can. We want the future for our kids to have clean drinking water, and we don't want, you know, huge garbage dumps. If we can repurpose that stuff and make it into benches and stuff like that, please do it. Yes, the recycling bins from Gil are tremendous. They're bigger, they're better, and they do a good job of picking them up, too.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Murphy, many developers refuse to build and will no longer do business in Sioux City because they claim the city is extremely hard to work with compared to other cities. With those projects now underway in other communities, what can Sioux City government do to be more accommodating?
This is the line of business that I came from. So I've already, if I get onto the council, I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna sit down. I'm gonna have contractors come in, and all the contractors that have left that I have built with, and I know ninety-five percent of them, sit down and have a session and see how we can make it easier, how we can make the zoning process, how we can make the process way easier to get the building in nets and make it a one-stop type shot so that we can get them out there and get them building. The more stuff that we can get built in Sioux City, the better off we are.
Ms. Shainer?
We are on that track now. The city has recently invested in, I believe it's called the Blue Light Table. And what it does is it allows the developers to electronically send their plans in. You can upload them onto this... It's like a Raspberry TV, but on a table this way. And then they can do their, make their points and things like that on it to expedite. And so we're on phase one with that now. And I do think that customer service has a lot to do with it. But I will say that just recently out of the blue, we had a major developer, Mr. Steve Nelson, come in and make a call and say, you know what? I just have to say how smooth our process is going over here at the Benson Building. I thank the city staff for helping and explaining, so it's not all bad.
Okay, this one gets back to a question we had earlier. In a world where younger generation, the younger generation are not having children quickly enough to replace the retiring baby generation, how do you plan to staff the anticipated economic development? And Ms. Shainer?
That's a tough one because it's true. They're not having babies as early. Some of them aren't having them at all. So we've gotta be attractive to lure other people to our city and get them to come here. And once again, quality of life, is our city clean, is our city safe? Do we have crime? A little bit, but I will tell you what. Every time there's a major crime in the city, all the police get them, every single time. If I hear of a major crime happening, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I see an arrest. So having a safe, clean, fun city with the opportunity to have a good job, that's what we're building in. We're almost there.
Mr. Murphy?
If we can get the professional kids that lead to go out, start their career as internships in other cities, if we can get them to come back here and raise our family and have their children, then we can reload and get the people back here. And, you know, we have a lot of good stuff here. We have a lot of good sports programs, little league programs, volleyball programs. Football playgrounds are really good. And even if we can get them to come back and get their families to raise, that's one thing we gotta work on. They've been good at it because they're getting bike trails, they're getting hiking trails. And they've done a lot of stuff, so I think we can work on that more and more and get them to come back.
Okay. I'm gonna skip the preface on this one. What should the city council be doing to get involved in the school districts locally? So how do we support tools? Mr. Murphy?
Well, that was a tough one because I don't know what the actual council can do on the school board agendas and stuff like that. But the city is involved because I was involved in all the new elementary schools that were built. And, you know, they... The city helped them, you know, do the undergrounds and all the services and sewers and stuff like that. So I think they've done a good job. But there's some things that I do not know until I get into it further. And I'm not gonna speculate on anything. I do not know what the council could actually do to help the school board and the teachers in their business, except maybe some big advice. You know?
We get plenty of that. Ms. Shainer?
The same, we're two separate entities. We share the same tax dollars. I will say that. It's split between us. They have their budget, we have ours. But we are very available to them. Like Tom was saying, when they build a new school, we work on the infrastructure. We help them with all of those kind of planning, make sure it works out all right. We're getting ahead of the traffic issues out on Barbara Drive right now. I already brought that up to my Public Works team because, let's face it, we talked about this new housing development, and people are concerned who live on Fort Hurst Street, rightly so, because for an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, it's gonna be tough. But let's not kid ourselves. That problem has been there for years, and we haven't tackled it. And I said, and I talked to a school board member, and I said, let's get in front of this. Let's not wait until they start building a house. Let's try to change the traffic flow now and get ahead of it. Let's get an idea of what we can do, and I'm not kidding you, I think we already found something.
I would appreciate that greatly. I drive to North every morning, right? Okay. Is your role as a city council member to expand government or limit government reach and ordinances? Ms. Shainer?
I don't think it's to expand government reach at all. I think that we should be reviewing ordinances from time to time. I don't think that we should be operating on forty and thirty and twenty-year ordinances because that's the way they've always done it, i.e. the local ordinance for the showers up here. It wasn't the showers, it was the fact that it's a trailer. So for us to be able to go in and make that exception for that party, that's fabulous. But no, I don't think we need any expansion of government reach. I think we are where we're at.
Okay, Mr. Murphy? Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I think there's plenty of government now. I just think we need to refine the services that the council does and the council, the services the council overlooks and make things that are more available or easier to get done and then everybody will be happy. You're not gonna make everybody happy all the time, but we can streamline some stuff and make it a lot easier.
Okay. I'm gonna ask one more question. I have a couple others, but they cover things that we've already talked about tonight. This one goes back to some of the things we've talked about earlier, but it's a little more focused. How do you plan to ensure that all the residents of Sioux City can have access to affordable housing and we have large populations of the elderly, disabled and underemployed workers cannot afford the current market rates for housing? So Mr. Murphy?
That, you know, the problem with affordable housing in the city of Sioux City is we are underdeveloped for lots. We do not have the space. Sioux City is the seventh most spread out city of the United States and we're, and we are in the less hills. So it's very hard to develop in the city. We don't have the access like Sergeant Love does where they have the nice black cornfields and bean fields so they can convert into housing. But I think we might be able to utilize a lot of the houses that are rent tag and be able to take them out and build an affordable type house, kind of like Habitat Humanities done. Those work really well. The people go in there and they put their sweat equity into it and they feel like they have accomplished something when they get done.
Thank you. Ms. Shainer?
Well, we are working on getting affordable housing and there's such a broad definition of affordable housing. We have affordable housing, you use the calculator that the banks use, it's one-third of your income should cover your utilities and your house payment. Now, your income and his income and my income, those are three different things, so I might get a hundred thousand dollar house, yours might get a sixty thousand dollar house, I mean, we don't know. So for me, and I said it before and I don't wanna be misunderstood, affordable housing is having a healthy inventory that have housing at all price points. And let's not forget that part of affordable housing is apartment living as well. Now we've got hundreds and hundreds of apartments being built. We have fifty-five plus apartment dwellings being built, we burned downtown where the old Howard Johnson was. We have housing development that the city owns the land, we're looking at Woodbury Heights on the far west side. Those homes will not necessarily be low income housing, but transitional housing from perhaps someone who's in a starter home and they're ready to go to the next level, but they're not ready to step into a five hundred thousand dollar house.
Okay. All right, thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City and Go, I want to thank our audience. Oh, I forgot something here. Let's have some closing statements. A little thing up in the top there. Okay, closing statements, sixty seconds, and Ms. Shainer, we'll start with you.
Well, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Folks like you, folks who are writing the comments in that ask the questions, that's the reason that I come to work every day. I was one of those people that used to ask the questions, why don't we do this, why should we do that, how about doing this? And those questions are kind of what keep me going. I'm reminded every day that our council shapes a lot of things in the city and I work hard every week to continue things moving along. I try to kind of shorten meetings if I can to say, let's not wait a month to come back, let's stay an extra ten minutes and let's see if we can wrap it up this time without takeaway. My family lives here and I want my grandkids to continue to live here when they grow up. I know we all have families and if families are successful, our city will be successful. And that's what we're all here for, is to make our cities better for our community that includes our friends, family and those who we don't know yet.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I would like to tell everybody thank you for coming out on a rainy night like this, it's miserable. First of all, the reason I wanna run for city council is I wanna make Sioux City a safe and better place to raise our families and everything. And I feel with my vast experience and all the stuff that I've done in Sioux City, I will be a great asset. And also the things that worry me was the Sioux Street replant. I'd like to be, you know, and get my hands on that and work on that quite a bit and just continue the quality of life that we have here. And also the main thing is, is public safety, try to get those water mains fixed, try to get that kind of stuff. That's not gonna hold up the progress of the city.
Thank you. Okay, now, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City and Sioux Land Go, I want to thank our audience for attending in person or watching online tonight's forum. We also wish to thank the city for working with us to arrange for the cable TV and YouTube coverage of this event. Above all, we wish to thank our candidates for their cooperation and commitment to public service. Please give them a round of applause. The election will be held on Tuesday, November seventh, with the polls open from seven to eight, seven AM to eight PM. A listing of your precincts is available from the County Commissioner of Elections at the Woodbury County website or at the Woodbury County Courthouse in room 103. There are two other methods to cast your ballot. You can fill out an absentee ballot request form. Those are available in the entry area if you wanna pick one up tonight and mail it to the Woodbury County Commissioner of Elections, who then will send you a ballot to complete and return by mail by the time the polls close on November seventh. You may also opt to vote early by casting an absentee ballot in person at the auditor's office in the Woodbury County Courthouse, room 103, during regular business hours beginning on October eighteenth. If you have questions, you may call the Woodbury County Commissioner of Elections at area code seven one two, two seven nine, six four, six five. Anyone seventeen years or older may register to vote in the first election after they turn eighteen. We have a voter registration forms out at the entry table. You may register to vote at your precinct on election day provided you bring acceptable ID, driver's license or other photo ID that is current valid and contains an expiration date and has your current address. The League of Women Voters of Sioux City and Sioux Land Go will host a Sioux City Community School Board Candidates Forum on Monday, October sixteenth at seven PM at Western Iowa Tech and their community college in their Rockland Center. Use parking lot two and entrance six for the most direct access. Should you wish to learn more about the League of Women Voters of Sioux City, membership and our focus on nonpartisan and voter member education on issues facing our nation, state and city, please stop at the table as you leave for membership information or you can email us at l w v Sioux City at gmail dot com. And you can also follow us on Facebook. Thank you again for your participation this evening and remember to vote in this and every election. Your vote is a precious gift, use it wisely on November seventh. This will conclude our candidate forum for the city council.